of our friends in the media on this call. So if you do not wish your image to be seen, exercise that option on Zoom to take your image off. This is an on the record meeting and we are thankful for our friends in the media who are doing what they can do to help promote the message of recovery during COVID-19 and we thank them for being here. And now with that said, I also want to say that if you are a person who's one of our guest speakers, what Brian has asked that you do is raise your virtual hand in the box so that Brian can scan and know that you're on. And if you know my cell number and you're one of our speakers, feel free to text me and let me know that you're on also. But we want to make sure that our special guest speakers get on right when they get on. We are anticipating Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth calling in about 12:30. And towards the end Senator K. Kirkpatrick calling in and we have a few other guests that are calling in. So with those technical announcements, I want to let our executive director, a great leader in recovery, Neil Campbell, take over the meeting.
Great. Thanks Jeff and thanks to all for joining today. We're so excited to have you here. I'm going to quickly introduce, because he's a busy, busy man, I'm going to introduce our Georgia's Attorney General, Chris Carr. He has been a huge ally for recovery since I've known him, which has been a few years now. And I just want to say how fortunate we are in Georgia to have someone who not only believes in recovery, but believes in lifting up the recovery voice. So I'd just like to thank you Attorney General Carr for joining us today and give you the floor.
Neil, thank you so much. Jeff, thank you as well. Appreciate the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse doing this and for inviting me. First and foremost, I hope that everybody and your family are doing well, that you are healthy and you are staying safe. That is the most important thing. And I appreciate the opportunity to be on. As Neil and Jeff and I were chatting before the virtual town hall started, it's busy. There's a lot going on now. Obviously, these are unique times. And we are in the midst of it as well. And I just wanted to give an update on a couple of different things that we're working on right now that really impact everybody. And that's scams and price gouging. And those are two areas that our office, the Office of the Attorney General, have been very involved in. And unfortunately, you know, we see this on a day to day basis. There are scams out there all the time that will be on the internet or text or email or even door to door or phone call. But unfortunately, during a crisis like this, a public health crisis during tornadoes or hurricanes, we see, you know, folks that are trying to take advantage of one another. And instead of helping one another, they're trying to abuse the system and taking advantage of each of us. And a lot of the scams that we're seeing right now have to do with coronavirus and COVID-19. Whether there are treatments or there are cures or vaccines, they're touting all of these. And unfortunately, there isn't a cure yet. There's not a vaccine. The good news is, I read an article the other day that there are about 44 different groups worldwide that are working on a vaccine. But it's not there yet. So please don't be scammed. Please go to a known source, a good source of information about this crisis, whether it's the CDC, Georgia Department of Public Health, coronavirus.gov or Governor Kemp's Coronavirus Task Force. There's a lot of different sources of information out there. But let's not turn this crisis and make it, it's difficult enough, let's not make it worse by being scammed, either out of our money or personal information or whatever that may be. The other area is price gouging. And anytime that there's an emergency, a state of emergency declared, as Governor Kemp did a couple of weeks ago, then our price gouging laws go into effect. And folks will contact our office. We've gotten well over now 300 complaints. Most of the complaints have to do with food or water, but also toilet paper, hand sanitizer and other disinfectants. And we've seen a little bit more of an uptick on the food side, particularly some of the commodities like eggs or meat and that sort of thing. But we're also seeing folks, and the president had issued an order on hoarding particularly medical supplies. And boy, I mean, now is not the time to be taking, to hoarding those kinds of personal protective equipment from our medical professionals that are on the front lines. I mean, I'm sure all of us have seen the news. They need us to be helping them. They need us to be getting them the sources of this equipment, not hoarding them and taking advantage of it. So that's another area that we've been focused on. But either way, my message is this, you are in control of the transaction, whether it's a scam. Remember, if you get a text, the other thing is this, the federal government just passed a bill where folks are going to be eligible for $1,200 up to an income level of $70,000. The federal government will not text you about getting your money. They will, usually the way this works is through the IRS. They will reach out to you. Remember, most, if the government has business to attend to with you, it will be through a, oftentimes through a letter. It's not on text. It's not on email. It won't be door to doors. But you are in control of your transaction. So please don't fall prey to that. Price gouging, there'll be another, you know, go find another source of whatever that good might be. Don't get taken advantage of there. You are in control of your transaction. And finally, I know that, again, I am so appreciative of Neil and Jeff and all of our champions in the recovery community. I know that those of you that are in long-term recovery, this is a tough time, high stress and high emotion. But remember, there are a lot of folks out there, we're pulling for you. I've said this before, every time I get to be around my friends in the recovery community, that is where strength is. That's where I see warriors that are out there in the community. And that's, now's the time to remember that and rely on one another, rely on the resources that are out there. Again, we were so pleased that we've started the statewide opioid task force. We still are a source of information. We are up and running and once this crisis gets past us, we'll have another meeting of the statewide task force as well. But I'm so proud to be a part of this group. I'm proud to support everything that you're doing and the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse is such a great organization, such great champion. So thank you so much for having me today. And again, everybody, let's stay safe. Let's stay positive. We're going to get through this. And we'll, we're just, you know, I know it's a tough time, but we're going to get through it and stay safe and stay positive.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming and thanks for that message. It's so important. Thank you. You've got other things to do. So thanks for being here.
Thanks Neil. I appreciate it. Y'all have a great rest of the day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Here we go. Imagine you receive a phone call from someone who wants your help. The phone call could be from a loved one, a friend, someone seeking services or a constituent. Let me share a real story from a real person who received real support. The call that stood out to me tonight was from a new peer that was calling to find long-term residential services that would take him in right now. I empathize with him that this is a difficult time to find someone accepting new residents. I found a list of places for him that were either low pay or self-pay or assisted payment. I made sure that he knew that I was proud of him and his choice of recovery today. I assured him that he did not have to do any of it alone. We are here for him. We are here to support him through whatever. I could hear him start to cry a little on the other end. He opened up and told me he was 56 years old and he couldn't remember the last time someone told him that. Then I began to tear up. I assured him that he could text or call us anytime he wanted support, just wanted to vent or share a triumph in his recovery. I could understand his thank you behind the tears. So that's a story of a peer recovery coach from last night. Our coaches on our peer support warm line receive these types of calls every day. And we ask them to reflect on the call that most stood out to them. And that's from our amazing peer recovery coach, Jody Dotson. And Jody wrote this last night at 11 o'clock and as I was standing and reading it before I went to bed in tears, I said, I've got to share this with people. So please know that we are here. People in recovery are here for you and we're here for our peers. And I know that all of you are too. And we have experienced peer support on the CARES warm line from 8:30 in the morning until 11 at night, seven days a week. And all we do is some radical listening and you'll see the number there. Brian has it in the chat box. So again, thank you all for coming to this town halls during, as we wind our way through this crisis. And we know that this crisis is not only physical challenges for us, but also emotional challenges. And we need each other and we want each other to know that we're not alone, that we are here. The recovery community has a huge tradition of showing up for each other. And I want you to know that public and private sector leaders are working around the clock to fix this stuff and to make it better. We're going to get past it. So for those of us in the recovery community, as the Attorney General said, and for those of us who are feeling emotional about what's going on, there are some resources and we do have the CARES warm line. There are virtual recovery meetings, basically 24/7, intherooms.org, virtualna.org and recoveryspeakers.com if you want to hear a recovery speaker. So we just wanted to make sure you know about those. So what is a town hall? Before we get to some of the folks that we have that are calling in, some of our public officials, I wanted to get some input from the folks around the state. So I put out a call to some providers that I know who would be responsive and asked them, what are you seeing on the ground? And these are some of the things they told us. That peers weren't prepared, that they ran out of food and cleaning supplies, that the proper education and prevention weren't introduced until the virus was here. And that we're seeing a high rate of people returning to illicit use and a higher acuity of need in some of our centers, especially in crisis stabilization units and in emergency departments. That we're seeing, having a reduced amount of contacts and that our peers are greatly missing their time with coaches and with their clinicians. That some of our peers don't have internet access, that they don't have access to their mental health meds. And they have access to meds that support their recovery, to Suboxone or Methadone or VivaTrol, but they don't have it to mental health meds in particular. So for some providers not being able to admit people due to safety of the individuals that are already in care, that's a big problem. So there are no new admissions because they can't determine, they can't make folks safe. And that serving people in early recovery and keeping them busy and engaged has proved to be a challenge. As those of us who are in early recovery will attest to. We also are seeing that there was no gasoline for peers who need to come to the clinic to get their meds. It was sort of caught off guard. And that several peers don't have phones and they are relying on face-to-face interaction, which is getting less and less as we go along. And that sober living homes are not taking new individuals and there's no place for a peer who's coming out of residential treatment to step down to. That most are closed or have kicked people out. And some, one person, one agency said, we need cleaning supplies. We have run out of cleaning supplies. And then of course, a lack of connectivity or a lack of know-how. We assume, you know, that we carry around our phones, that everybody knows. It's just not the case. And that our lack of devices in rural areas with a high rate of infection has been a challenge. Those are just some of the things that we're seeing on the ground. If you wanted to type in the chat box of any others and we can mention them as we go through this process. And Jeff, I'm going to ask you if there's anybody that you'd like to introduce at this point, or do we keep going?
No, thank you for that Neil. We do have some of our special guests on the line and I would like to give them a chance to give their brief updates if that would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
So I would like to start with our awesome co-chairman of the General Assembly Bipartisan Working Group on Addiction and Recovery. And that is that recovery champion from the Smart Inviting's area, State Representative Eric Allen. Representative Allen.
Yeah, I just want to say hello and my goal today is to hear from the community. So just so thankful for the Georgia Council for setting this up and look forward to being helpful. Thank you Jeff. Keep my, it's very brief.
Thanks, sir.
And we also are joined by very special guest and it's been very public what he's dealing with. And we are thankful that he is thinking of the recovery community at a time when he's going through what he's going through. And he's been a champion for us in the General Assembly from Bartow County, State Representative Matthew Gamble. Mr. Representative. You're on mute Matt. Brian, unmute Matt.
Sorry about that. Good to be with everybody today and appreciate this opportunity, this forum that the council's provided. As I've mentioned to you Jeff, the resources that y'all have put out over the past weeks have been excellent. And I've been getting each one of them. So thank y'all for letting me come on today.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we also have a pioneer, a true leader, breaking, groundbreaking in law enforcement and public safety. One of our great first responders, Police Chief of the Year and a great supporter of recovery out of Marietta, Georgia, the Chief of Police, Chief Dan Flynn. Chief.
Good afternoon to everyone. Jeff, Neil, good to, good to talk with you, hello under difficult circumstances. Four things I'd like to say. You know, first, under the leadership and support of Governor Brian Kemp, I think the recovery community has made excellent sustained progress over the last year or so. And I think it's very important at this point that we don't let the coronavirus crisis erase the progress that we've all made as a recovery community. So very important to keep, not erase that and keep that going. Secondly, I think the coronavirus presents a unique challenge for the recovery community. And that is that a large amount of the process the recovery community uses involves face-to-face counseling and very often group counseling. And really, even though we can do a lot of things with video, you know, such as this conference right now, that really doesn't take the place of face-to-face counseling. But even that, that presents challenges in terms of social distancing that we're all now asked to do. So I would say, I know it's a challenge. I know it's difficult, but we need to find workarounds. We need to, you know, be certainly be observant of, you know, the very good advice that we have to say what about social distancing, but find ways to still continue face-to-face counseling and and work around, but still keep our social distance. It's crucially important right now and certainly for the next few weeks. The next thing I'd like to say is that clearly in our society in general and all over the state of Georgia, there's understandably a very high level of anxiety over the coronavirus crisis. It's everywhere. Well, for the recovery community and most specifically for persons in recovery, you know, that's difficult because they live with, they already live with a certain level of stress and anxiety over their, over their recovery. And when you add that to the general stress and anxiety that we're all feeling, it's, things become, become very difficult. So we need to, we need more than ever, we need the involvement and help of the mental health community with the recovery community. And we need to all do everything that we can to, to not let stress become distress. And again, not to lose the gains that we've made over the last year or so. You know, we're not out of the woods yet with the opioid crisis, but we can't let the coronavirus set us back either. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep. Chief, thank you so much. And the chief received Larissa on our team and myself up at his office. And he's just doing great work in Marietta and Cobb County in particular. And we are just looking forward to continuing to work with you in person after all of this. We did get a text just a moment ago from Congresswoman Macbeth's staff. They're getting ready for the 12 o'clock timeframe. So she is on track. So if you're on the call, know that we are anticipating Congresswoman Macbeth at about 12:30. I don't see you listed here and I apologize for being old, but if Commissioner Johnson from DeKalb County is on here on the phone number, please just raise your virtual hand so that Brian can see you and we will bring you up.
Well Jeff, if they're dialed in, they wouldn't be able to do that without the application of the Zoom app.
Right, or just, right. Or email me or something to let me know y'all are on the, everybody has my phone number. It's 404-615-5735. It's everywhere. So text me if you're on the call, if we don't see you. And if we see the Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson from DeKalb County, we will bring her up immediately. And we are also anticipating Senator K. Kirkpatrick at about 12:45. She's in a meeting right now, but definitely wanted to get on. So Neil, that's, that's what I know about guests right now. Turn it back over to you.
Okay. I want to thank Chief Flynn so much for being on board with us that, you know, we, we're all in this together. And I appreciate bringing the opiate crisis back into our fold because it really is not over. We're still, we're still seeing that every day and our providers are seeing that on the ground as well. I wanted to bring up some, the CARES Act that passed last week. I wanted to just mention a few things that are going to be available as a result of this act that was bipartisan, bicameral, passage of this important amendment.
What's your phone number and we'll pull it up.
Hey Jeff, put yourself on mute, my friend. So we could have, so we have this bipartisan legislation. And first and foremost, there is $425 million that has been allocated to SAMSA. I know that sounds like a lot. It's not enough. But we have about 250 million of that going to certified community behavioral health clinics. We have 50 million for suicide prevention, 100 million for emergency response that can target where it's most needed, such as for those experiencing homelessness, which I know a lot of you are dealing with out there. And then 15 million specifically for tribal communities. And then most of us are familiar who are working in this field a while with 42 CFR. There've been a couple of provisions that have been changed. That's a privacy law similar to HIPAA. And so what's happened with that through the CARES Act is that it has been amended. It's been, some will say fixed, some will say broken, to more align with the HIPAA Act, Health Insurance Portability Act. And, but what it does, it does have a provision in it that says we, someone is prohibited from discriminating against anyone for the following purposes. And you can see those on the screen, admission to, access to or treatment to healthcare, hiring or firing, a receipt of workers' comp, sale, rental or continued rental housing, access to courts on all levels, access and maintenance of social service benefits and affording access to services provided with federal funds. And yes, we will put a PDF of this presentation in the chat box at the end of the meeting. We've also seen, as I mentioned, 42 CFR. It's going to ease the ability of healthcare providers in terms of the substance use disorder prevention patient consent forms. So you guys will all be hearing about this. The thing about it, I want you to remember is that SAMSA has 12 months to create administrative rules to enact this legislation. So we still, if you have problems with this, there'll be an opportunity for you to, to be able to weigh in on it in the coming months. So they, they always say 12 months. I imagine that'll get extended, something as significant as this usually does. And Jeff, I'll have a break there or you want me to keep going?
Actually Neil, we, and I apologize for not muting, but we do have Commissioner Johnson set up now. So Brian, if you can make sure she's good to go.
I hear. Hey, there she is.
Commissioner, welcome. The great, great leader out of DeKalb County, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you for being with us today.
Not a problem. I'm just going to disconnect because we are literally having COVID calls back to back today. And we have a new task force and today was our first time actually convening. But let me first begin by saying to you Jeff, as well as everyone that's involved on the Council on Substance Abuse, this is a very important call. One thing that we've found, and I think everyone on this call is painfully aware, this is a multi-dimensional problem. It goes beyond health. This has economic impacts. It is detrimental as it relates to our substance and our communities that may be struggling with addiction. And also as this moves forward, because of the economic impact, there is even a greater fear for services for recovery because many people will begin to experience depression and stress. So on the county level, we have, as many of you may be aware, like most other municipalities, we currently in place two mechanisms to do what we can. And we are constantly reviewing those because amongst some within the community, we do not feel that they are adhering to the policies. We currently have mandatory social distancing. We have not taken the measure of closing restaurants. We have indicated that if you are within a confined space, of course, the mandatory social distancing of a minimum of six feet apart. And of course, we have in place our state in place orders. For anyone that is not essential or if there is not an essential service, we are asking individuals to stay in place. Because over the course of the next several days and weeks, we must flatten this curve. The numbers that surround the potential infections for COVID within the state and throughout Georgia is alarming to us, even with the current measures that we have in place. Ensuring that people on the front line have the resources that they need. One of the conversations we just had with Dr. Sandra Ford, who currently represents both DeKalb as well as Fulton County, is the lack of testing or the access thereof to test kits as well as the turnaround time once a test actually occurs. Another part of that conversation was we are now instituting in DeKalb County, literally drive-through testing, where specimens are actually collected. The individuals do not leave the car. But in order to do that, if you reach out to your doctor or a medical professional, if you are demonstrating symptoms, you must have what's called a PUI. You must be a person under investigation. That there is a clear reason for you to be tested. And then you can report to those drive-through specimen sites. For anyone who has a concern, if you feel you demonstrate any signs of COVID, that phone number is 404-294-3700. Again, that's 404-294-3700. And please choose option one. Share your symptoms and once you are given or identified as a person under investigation, you will be given directives to report to those specimen testing site. And currently that, of course, this is another serious concern that we have throughout the county. Because of the limited testing labs for COVID, we're experiencing on average four to nine days and in some cases even longer, depending upon the test site that is utilized. So if you fear that you may have been exposed to COVID, we ask you to immediately self-quarantine. Also today during our conversation, it was disclosed that up to 48 hours before symptoms manifest or you are a known carrier, you can actually infect others. So I think as we move forward, this is ever evolving. There was no roadmap. Unfortunately, we are learning this and how to deal with it in real time. So again, if there are concerns from the community, my office is always available as it relates to economics. My newsletter is very thorough. There are monies in place that are designed to assist our small business owners. I'm a huge advocate for local because when we bail out our corporate entities, they, or shall I say, that that's what it is, a bailout. But when we help our local community, it's often called a handout. But 97% of all businesses are small businesses. And the impact to our communities could be detrimental with many of those businesses experiencing severe economic, financial losses. So please, if you're not receiving my newsletter, my website is commissionerlorrainecochranejohnson.com. Again, commissionerlorrainecochranejohnson.com. We have made it easy for you. All you have to do is click the link and it will take you over to resources if you are a business owner for which you can apply. I do want to set everyone's mind at ease that there will be no interruption of any services, essential services, whether that's water, sanitation or electric during this time. And we have asked for a halt in evictions. So there will be no cases heard during this time. Again, reach out to our office if you need anything. For those who may be experiencing or in need of food, my last newsletter has 19 different locations that are providing food assistance as well as groceries. This past Saturday, This past Saturday, we actually distributed over 300 bags of groceries, sight on scene, no questions asked, at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, and this has been approved by the Department of Homeland Security, and we have clearance to continue issuing groceries from now until infinity if needed. So thank you all for the opportunity to serve, and again, to Jeff as well as Neil, thank you for what you're doing. It's great, Representative Campbell, to see you on this call, although you may not know me, I follow you closely, and I have remained here if needed, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, thank you so much, and I just want to also say, I put the Small Business Association, SBA.gov, that's also a link you can go to, to find out what benefits that small businesses can be eligible for, including nonprofits. So if you run a nonprofit, I run a nonprofit, you were not excluded from this, there was some really good advocacy around including nonprofits into this bill, so, and I'm talking about the CARES Act again, so y'all can keep up to date by going there as well. And yeah, and so Jean Conroy's also reminded me that the Georgia Center for Nonprofits, I'm gonna put in a shameless plug for them, if you're not a member, it's a good idea to become a member of them, they've got a lot of good advocacy and stuff going on for small businesses as well. We know small businesses are the engine of our country, and we will get that, that's gonna be something that we all are going to need to have help with, and that CARES Act helped with that.
Neil?
Sir?
Just want to let you know that we do have our very special guest from Washington on, if you'd like to introduce her now.
Yeah, so Representative Lucy Macbeth came to our office about six months ago, we invited a bunch of states, United States congresspeople, and she was one of them who came, and it was a delight to meet her and to hear her vision. We also went up on Hill Day and got to meet her, and as soon as all of us said to Representative Macbeth that we are people in long-term recovery, she literally grabbed every one of us and hugged us and said, "Thank you for what you do." So I just, without further delay, I'd just like to introduce and thank Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth, who showed up today.
Well, thank you, Neil, and hello, everyone. I am really thankful to the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse for all the work that you've been doing, and for convening this virtual town hall for members of the recovery community. I know that these are difficult times for every one of us. And as this crisis continues to grip the nation, I, you know, I've heard from Georgians across the state who are feeling so anxious about this crisis, and I know that in times like these, that, you know, uncertainty is expected, and this is really a serious pandemic, and the worst may still be yet to come. So, you know, we are bracing ourselves and getting prepared as much as we possibly can to fight the spread of this disease, and I know that Americans are doing a really good job of social distancing, but as a country, we've got, we've been working together to make sure that we all stay apart, there's more that we will have to do, but these are necessary measures to flatten the curve, and we really want to be able to mitigate the virus. But, you know, social distancing can take a toll on our mental health, and at times we may have great feelings of isolation and disconnection from those that we love in our communities and our workplace. However, I just want to tell you, I've been very inspired by seeing so many people come together in service to one another, and that's really what we're supposed to do. And I'm sorry that it's taken this pandemic to bring that sense of community again, but I'm really, really grateful for the time of community that we're building. And, you know, I just want to say that the recovery community, you have been a shining example of how people can really come together to overcome a terrible disease. And I want you to know that I'm committed to doing everything in my power to protect every resident in this district. And I also want to assure you that I'm in close contact with House leadership, and contact with the governor to work on addressing the coronavirus, so that we're all working together. And I know that they really share my concerns about needing to support the recovery community, and they also too want to ensure that everyone is safe throughout our state and our region. And I know that this crisis has caused incredible disruption in your lives, I know, you know, for people that don't work from home every day, you know, we're kind of cloistered in our homes and with the social distancing, I know that it can be somewhat difficult. But I also know that you that are on the phone, you are strong and you are a resilient community, you really, really are, and by staying together, you know, virtually through our phone calls, our virtual meetings, and our video chats, I know that you're gonna pull through this crisis as strong as ever, as I know that we all will. And I want you to personally know that I believe your spirit, the spirit that you inhabit, really, really helps our country pull through this crisis, because you yourselves have been through your own crises. And as you probably know, both the House and the Senate, we've actually passed three pieces of legislation thus far in response to the coronavirus pandemic. We're actively working on the fourth package now as we speak, so we'll be putting that together again, because we know that the country still needs more continued help and support. But just to give you a little bit of information, the three bills that we've already passed, they include free coronavirus testing for everyone in the nation. We also have passed emergency economic security for families, which includes increased access to all paid emergency leave, enhanced unemployment insurance, and a one-time payment of $1,200 for individuals who make less than $75,000, and couples who make less than $150,000, as well as up to $500 per child in a household. And we've given billions in aid for our small business loans, and it also includes increased food security for those that are most vulnerable in our population, and also healthcare funding for our workers, our patients, and our hospitals. The last piece of legislation, the CARES Act, what we just passed, also includes 425 million in funding for increased mental health and substance use services, and along with extension and expansion of the community mental health services program. So this funding was a priority for me, specifically, my team and I made sure that we were trying to put forth this funding to protect you, but I do anticipate that, you know, there's gonna be more work that we're gonna need to do, because there are so many more people that are in need of our help. So as we move forward, you know, I'll continue to work with my colleagues to find the solutions for mental health and substance use disorder crisis in our country, and I stand in awe at your strength, I truly do, I stand in awe of the strength of so many of you who fight every day to overcome this disease, and even in times of such extraordinary uncertainty, you are standing strong. So I look forward to your amazing triumphs, and the triumphs that so many in the recovery community are going to accomplish going forward. I will always stand with you and with your families, and I really want to thank you for letting me just talk with you today and share in this really incredible camaraderie that our community is exhibiting. And just know that my staff and I are always available, and please feel free to reach out to us and let us know how we can support you. Never hesitate to reach out to me, and you can do so if you go to macbeth.house.gov or through our district office, and that number is 470-773-6330. But thank you for everything that you're doing, we're standing with you, please stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you, Representative Macbeth, we are honored to have you here. You know, when I think about it, you know, this is where my recovery brought me, I'm actually talking to the United States Congresswoman, a Chief of Police, a County Commissioner, State Representative, you know, I never thought that I would be doing this, and because of my recovery, and if it weren't for my recovery, I wouldn't be doing this, so thank you. And she really means that y'all, she listens, and so I really want to thank all of our leaders who are, who have joined us either virtually, or on the phone, or with their cameras. Jeff, do we have anyone else?
Well, I think we are getting close to that moment, but Congresswoman, I just want to add my thanks, and to do my effort on the advocacy part, to just encourage you to talk with the members of the House, the Appropriations Committee, and the leadership, as they move forward with further relief bills, to really focus on funding our recovery community organizations, they do such great work with communities, they have saved lives, they save lives every day, they're saving lives through this crisis, and to have, to know that they'll be funding for these recovery community organizations, that would be just such a tremendous blessing, and thank you for your leadership.
You're so welcome, you always have my support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we are anticipating, I'm looking at a clock somewhere, Senator Kirkpatrick coming in, but until she does, and I will text her in just a moment, Neil, you can pick back up, and I'll pick up when it's my time.
Okay, it's your time, we're gonna go right, there you go, Jeff.
It's my time. So, okay, so what can we do to advocate? This has actually been a wonderful opportunity to learn. I am so impressed at how many of our elected officials are utilizing social media to be in touch with their constituents in a bipartisan and nonpartisan manner, and I want to suggest to you that I've done what I'm about to suggest, and I encourage everybody on this call to do the same. So I've gotten on some virtual town hall meetings with both Democrats and Republicans, and I have communicated through the chat feature, and here's Senator Kirkpatrick texting right now that she is on the line, so I'm just gonna stop right there and say that I understand Senator K. Kirkpatrick is on, and Brian, if you have her unmuted, I'd like to just thank Senator Kirkpatrick also, he's been very public about what she's dealing with, she authored Senate Bill 311, which Neil Campbell testified on. Senator, we thank you for your leadership, and thank you for being here today.
If she's on via phone, I'll need her phone number.
I will text that to you, so we don't give her phone number out.
A.K. Holton, is that it?
Say it again.
There is a K.K. Holton.
That's her.
Yep.
Senator?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for being here.
Sure thing, sorry, I've been on one conference call after another, pretty much all day, every day, like I'm sure everybody else is, and from my house, obviously, I'm sure most of you probably know that I am in recovery mode myself with this COVID virus, and have been in my house for somewhere over two weeks now. And one of the things that I've sort of learned in the process is that your normal lifestyle becomes much more difficult when you're confined to one room in your house, or even your entire house, and so your normal way of healthy eating, or exercise, and all those things that really keep us in a routine are very much more difficult to maintain. And I think that's important when it comes to recovery, because what you don't want to do is wreck your entire program while you're living a different lifestyle, that you don't really know how long it's gonna last. And so I think what each of us has to do is to figure out how we're gonna adapt and adjust to this new reality in order to maintain healthy habits and keep going down the track that people are trying to go on. So I don't know exactly how to explain that, but I just think it's much more difficult for us to do all the things that we need to do, and certainly, if you get sick from this, it becomes a different issue, but if you're asymptomatic and you're sheltering in place, or staying home, I think it's gonna be very important to do that self-care, and to be sure that you're maintaining some type of a routine, particularly when it comes to getting outside, getting some exercise one way or another, healthy eating, and all those things that we all need to be doing as part of our overall health.
Of course, a medical doctor, and not only you have that professional background, but you're also a leader in the Senate on the Health and Recovery Committee, so we are just thankful that you've made time for our community at all, at this time in your life, there's a lot of prayers for you, a lot of love for you, respect for you, and it's just a privilege to have you on the call.
Thank you so much, happy to be here.
And as we get back into the session, we want everybody to be supportive of Senate Bill 311, it passed the Senate, correct, the full Senate?
I think it passed unanimously, if I remember right.
Exactly right, so somewhere when the powers that be figure out when they're gonna get back together, it'll be over in the House, and we'll want it to go, it'll go through a House committee, we'll want it to pass that committee, it'll pass hopefully the full House, and we'll want our recovery community to be very supportive of Senate Bill 311, so that it can get through the House, and I know that at the right time, Senator Kirkpatrick will be reminding us all about that, and we'll be there to support you at that time.
We'll definitely be staying in touch about that, and other legislation that's important to the recovery community, and I just have to say that at this point, we have no idea when that's gonna take place, and the one thing that we're constitutionally mandated to do is to pass a budget before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. And at this point, because I think all of us know that we haven't reached the peak of this yet, I don't have any projection about when all that's gonna happen, and it is entirely possible that mostly the only thing that's gonna happen whenever we go back is the budget. But I would hope that some of the very important bills that affect all of us, that still need to go through the system, can get done this year, but I don't think there's anybody at any pay grade that can give you any firm answers or any dates on that right now.
And the Senator's perspective is absolutely correct, of course, everything she said, just to echo it, and we will work collaboratively with the members of the Working Group on Addiction and Recovery, and our friends in our leaders, and I know some of them are on the call, Commissioner Judy Fitzgerald and her team, not just her leadership team, but everybody at DBHDD, they have been real champions for mental health and addiction recovery throughout the General Assembly and throughout this crisis. They are also saving lives every day by the work they do, and we will work as a solid, positive partner with all of the stakeholders, to make sure that as they move forward with the next budget, that the recovery community in both mental health and addictive services is as represented as it possibly can be in the strongest terms possible. And we just thank our friends at DBHDD, Senator Kirkpatrick, and all the members who are working hard in the budget for our community.
And Senator Kirkpatrick, thank you for showing up, I know you can't be feeling 100% yet, but you came on, and that means a whole lot to me personally, and I know to everybody who's the 130-something people that are on this call, so thanks for showing up, even though you're not well, but you're gonna get better, and you're gonna make a full recovery.
Okay, so thank you, Senator. So let me just, in the interest of time, jump into what I was talking about with these virtual town halls. So you get on, we will be, the first thing I want to say is, we have shared, and we will continue to share, and you will see some shares this afternoon, on the ones, these town halls that we've become aware of by elected officials. So the idea is to get on there and to interact with them, when they offer questions, ask a question about recovery. Doesn't have to be a technical question, just to remind them that the recovery community is looking for support, appreciates their leadership. I have done that, we have had state representatives and state senators sharing the warm line number, I typed the warm line number in the comments, it has led to discussions. So this is a chance to advocate for ourselves in our homes during this crisis, we will let you know the ones that we know about. And to that end, I'm going to tell you that today at 4 o'clock, and it's not a town hall meeting, but it is a press conference by Governor Kemp, it's gonna be Facebooked on his Facebook page, I believe it's also gonna be on Georgia Public Broadcasting's social media pages, perhaps the networks will cover it live, but there is a major update coming from the governor at 4 o'clock today. Tonight, there is a legislative town hall in the city of College Park with my state Senator Nan Orrock, Senator Williams, Senator C., and 1, 2, 3, 4 state representatives. And I will be posting their image on our page, but it's a Zoom town hall at 6:00 PM tonight. Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, the Atlanta Fulton County Collaborative On-Air Town Hall broadcast on WAOK radio station, we'll post that image also, and there's a broadcast on WAOK radio station, we'll post that image also, and there's a conference ID that you can call into this, and there's at least eight or nine members of the Atlanta City Council and Fulton County Commission on this call, with some healthcare professionals, that's gonna be a great town hall for those of you in the city of Atlanta and Fulton County. We know on Thursday, April 2nd at 3:00 PM, one of the members of our task force, Senator John Albers, has a Georgia District Director for the Small Business Association, Terry Dennison, on his Zoom Town Hall, so if you have small business questions, I was on Senator Albers' last meeting, and it was very well done. Also, the South Atlanta Legislative Delegation, 1, 2, 3, 3 state representatives, and again, Senator Nann Orrock, are hosting on Thursday at 6:30 PM, a Zoom Town Hall meeting, so we'll put that up too, so you can join those leaders, and our own Eric Allen will be on a COVID-19 Facebook Live, not Zoom, but Facebook Live, community conversation on the 3rd, which I'm presuming is going to be Friday, at 7:00 PM, Eric Allen on the Facebook Live will be promoting that, and then Saturday morning, State Representative Michael Caldwell, great champion of recovery, does a Facebook Live, also he does them every Saturday at 9:00 AM, and he has been a great proponent of sharing the Warm Line on his calls, and so these are just the ones that we know about now, if you learn of any, please share them with us, please promote them on your social media, but this is a chance to let our electeds know, so things you can...
Jeff, I'd just say one thing, that just make sure, you know, if you're on, you're in recovery, and you want to help, I think that's how we've gotten so much traction over the last few years, is not to say we're going to criticize our public officials, not that we can't, but we, you know, to be able to say, "We're in recovery and we want to help," or "I'm an ally of recovery and I want to help," or ask what we can do, what is supporting recovery right now in our communities, and what could be better, so those types of questions, they, you know, I have found, when I go on and ask my representatives, they're very glad to get those, because they don't have a lot of expertise in the room, and of course, to always say thank you, it's really important that, you know, my goodness, we had a United States Congressperson on our call, we don't do that by being mean, we do it by being inviting, and to say that we do, we're just here and we want to help, and that's all, Jeff, thanks.
No, I couldn't agree more, saying thank you is such a big part of recovery itself for me, and I hope that you thank everybody, this is a time to go past partisanship, maybe to not criticize right now, but try to support, it'll be a time for that other stuff later, but what we are looking for from our elected officials, no matter who they are, no matter what party they're from, is to support the recovery community during this crisis, and we do that by saying, "How do we help, and by the way, here's what we need," and we do that collaboratively and professionally. So, how can you advocate? Well, get on our Twitter, our Facebook, our Instagram, our LinkedIn, share them, like them, comment on them, for $0, you can help spread the word of recovery, and folks, you know, we have new likes every day on our page, and you may be the one that brings somebody who's still in active addiction into recovery, and that may save a life, and so our, not just our pages, but basically every single RCO has at least one social media platform, some have all of them, they're doing great work, they're tremendous, and we try to share as much of what they do as we can on ours, but you need to go to theirs, you need to like theirs, you need to interact with them and boost their numbers up, because they are on the front lines in our communities across the state, and they deserve and need and are very, very worthy of all of our supporting what each and every one of them are doing. So, those are just some ways you can advocate and stay connected, you will, you can email me if you want to be on our advocacy email list, it's a growing special email list, it's not the ones we send out, I send it out from my email account, we have call to actions on there, and we invite you to join that, jeff@gasubstanceabuse.org, hop, send me a note, we had about 10 or 12 people do it after last week's call, and we just communicate with you in specific things that you can specifically do to help, and you're more than invited to join. I think that was my last slide. Well, I think, Neil, this is...
Sorry, yeah.
No, back to you on this one, or me? Do this, this is what you can do personally, and this was a collaboration from all of our team, talking and connecting together, I know Jay on our staff was really involved in this, and so many others, but, you know, we really believe that if we listen to health experts, that if we keep hope alive, if we just practice wellness, common sense wellness, and more than anything on this list, we lead with love, compassion, and understanding, we stay connected with each other and our friends and families, and by staying connected, that implies just checking on each other, "How are you doing?", "Just wanted to send you something funny," these are things that we can do as individuals and as a community to advance recovery, to advance our personal well-being, and to help others, and we just encourage you to think about these, and if you feel these are of value, to feel free to share these with anybody you'd like to.
Yep, and we have five minutes, I believe, or three minutes, if you want to virtually raise your hand if you have a burning desire, as those of us know, at the end of meetings, we sometimes do a call for a burning desire, we can answer a question or two, otherwise, we will be here, let's see, next week, we don't know who our guests will be at this point, but you can, you know, whether it's whoever is here is supposed to be here, and we're gonna hopefully keep growing, we had over 140 people, I think I saw it one time on, so that's pretty incredible, you guys, and like Jeff said, if we take care of each other, we just keep growing the recovery community, and we're gonna get stronger and stronger. Brian?
We have a question from Lisa, it looks like.
Okay.
Hey there, I don't have a question, I just really wanted to thank you guys for doing this today, this was great, and really appreciate all of your efforts and getting our leaders on this call today, that was fantastic, and appreciate all the information, and I just want to encourage everybody that's in recovery to hang in there, I'm getting ready to celebrate an anniversary in a few days, and I'm gonna be doing it virtually, so it's gonna be very different, for sure, but that's okay, I'm super excited about it anyway, and I just want to encourage everybody to change your language, and instead of promoting social distancing, let's promote practicing physical distancing and practice virtual connection, because we all know that the opposite of addiction is connection, right? And then we get recovery, so let's stay connected virtually, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Let me also add, Neil, that we experimented today, thanks to Brian, who just does a great job with our RCOs, and apparently is our technology guru, with a Facebook Live broadcast, and it was organic, we didn't really promote it, because we didn't really think about it until last night, and I know Brian, at one point, it had about 20, the last time I saw, we'll promote it next time, but thanks to everybody who has been watching on Facebook Live, that means a lot to us also, and if you have any observations or comments or criticisms of how it came across on Facebook, please let us know, so we can learn what you saw, and how we can do it better from a Facebook perspective.
They're thanking you right now, giving you all sorts of likes for giving them a shout out, so.
There you go, we love our Facebook Live-ers. Hey, we are advocating with Governor Kemp for, and I saw somebody made a comment about the homelessness, I want to say one thing, the Mayor of Atlanta, Mayor Bottoms, is the Chair of Governor Kemp's Subcommittee on the homelessness, on homeless and displaced for the coronavirus task force, and she's doing great work, working statewide on that issue, and I would encourage you to follow Mayor Bottoms on her social media, she does a lot of updates on her work with the homeless in COVID-19 as Chair of that Subcommittee, and to that end, we are asking and advocating to Governor Kemp, with our friends in the mental health community, to do a Subcommittee for Mental Health and Addiction Recovery, and we will continue to work on that with him, and hope that he will see the opportunity to form a Subcommittee on that end, and just want you to know we're doing that, so there's some things going on regarding COVID-19 specifically. Neil, thank you for letting me be a part of this, it is next Wednesday, noon to 1:00, and I'll turn it back over to Neil.
All right, thank you all for being here, remember, your voice matters, whether you are writing, am I muted, no, whether you're writing to your public officials, or whether you're like us and like to stand on the steps of the Capitol and yell loudly, we need your voice, we need your voice for recovery, and I thank you so much for being on here and for allowing my dream to come true, and I hope you all have a great day, and please stay safe, stay well, and let's take care of each other, thank you.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. Follow us on social...